Ladies and gentlemen, we're ready to bring this evening's, begin this evening's board meeting.
Oh, you're so funny.
The school board meeting of January 14th, 2014 is now called to order. The time is 6:02 PM. This time, we request that all cell phones and all pagers be turned off or be put in the silent mode. And also, we ask that you please refrain from using flash photography, except during the special presentation portion of the meeting. Tonight is the first night that we have one of our student representatives on the dais with the rest of us. Mr. Brandon Rice from North Fort Myers High School is here. He will be sitting in tonight and participating in some of the discussion. Brandon, we're happy to have you here. Anything you want to say?
I'd like to represent North Fort Myers High School and the rest of the students of Lee County.
Brandon was born in Asheville, North Carolina, came to Cape Coral in 2006, attended J. Collins English, and then Diplomat Middle School. As I said, he's currently a senior attending North Fort Myers High School, and he's taken part in many clubs and had positions, including Vice President of the Spanish Club for two years, mock trial, a 2014 class officer, and this year adding Executive Council President. He's dedicated time to community service, which is an important piece of this whole puzzle, and has logged over 100 hours in the past two years alone. So, we're very happy to have you here, Brandon, and look forward to your participation. We'd like to take this opportunity to remind members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential in the district's vision to be a world-class school system. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, presentation of colors and pledge of allegiance, one recognition, two resolutions, one acknowledgement, public comment, consent action items, which include four items under executive services, three items under business and finance, six items under operations, one superintendent recommendation, which is good cause. Dr. Graham, could you please provide an explanation for this item?
This item is coming forward tonight in the interest of time. It is to award the vendors who are going to participate in this year's SES program, and if we delay it to the end of the month, that backs them and our students up as far as getting started.
As presiding officer, I find there is good cause to add this item to the agenda. And there will be four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Fisher, second by Mr. Armstrong. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the like sign. Motion carries five to zero. Tonight, Mrs. Morgan will deliver the invocation, after which Ms. Fisher will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. After the special presentations portion of the agenda, I'm going to call a brief recess to allow those who wish to leave an opportunity to do so. Please stand for the prayer and the pledge.
I would like to share some thoughts as we begin tonight's meeting. We are meeting here as a school board and community to advance educational opportunities for every child in this district. We want to help our students be the best they can be. Let us take this moment to consider the importance of the responsibility each one of us has in raising and educating the children of this community. Let us remember to thank every member of this learning community for whom educating children is a calling and a passion. Let us be patient as we work together, be open and transparent in our conduct, and be prepared to embrace challenge and change. Let us strive to do good here, to be honest and ethical in our dealings, and to serve the children of this district to the best of our abilities. Thank you.
Tonight, the cadet presenting the national colors will be introduced by Command Sergeant Major David Golker. Sergeant Major Golker served 27 years active duty, to include two combat tours. His awards include two Bronze Stars and the Legion of Merit. Command Sergeant Major Golker has been a J.R.O.T.C. instructor for nine years in Lee County, and the past four years at Island Coast High School.
Ladies and gentlemen, the national colors for our pledge of allegiance tonight will be presented by Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Joseph Rosales, a senior at Island Coast High School with a GPA of 4.0. He is a member of the National Honor Society and currently the J.R.O.T.C. Gator Battalion Commander. He was a member of the 2011 State Raider Champions that took second place, the 2012 State Champions, the 2013 State Champions taking third place. Cadet Rosales was captain of the Raider Team and cross-country team, a member of the varsity soccer team. He's an American Legion Boy State attendee and has been recognized with the Do the Right Thing Award. Cadet Rosales plans on attending a four-year university with an R.O.T.C. scholarship. Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is my pleasure this evening to be bringing recognition to the Lee County Educational Support Person of the Year. I would like to ask Mr. James Lefco and Principal Lynn Harrell to please join me here at the lectern. But before they get up here, I'm going to steal a little bit of Mr. Lefco's thunder. Yesterday, when he was interviewed by the TV, he said, "I have two children of my own, but I have 600 here at the school." So, I think that says it all. It sums it up very well, that this is the type of person that you want in education. The Lee County Education Support Person of the Year program provides an opportunity to recognize members of the district's support staff who contribute to their school or department and build positive relationships with those he or she encounters on a daily basis. Each year, the district chooses one individual whose dedication and attitude exceed the norm. The recipient of this year's award is Mr. James Lefco, Food Manager at Bay Shore Elementary. Mr. Lefco has been at Bay Shore Elementary for three years. He now joins a very elite group of people, the school district's best of the best of the support personnel. He is a remarkable food service manager who always gives 110%. Upon his arrival, he was able to organize and manage the cafeteria, streamlining procedures for efficiency. The cafeteria staff quickly welcomed him, and he has built a strong team that works together for children. Once Mr. Lefco established the school cafeteria to his high standards, he started a project that would support Bay Shore Elementary and give the families an additional way to be involved in the school. He established a fishing club at Bay Shore Elementary in February of 2011. He scheduled club meetings with students once a week and after school, and scheduled opportunities for families to fish on excursions once a month. The Bay Shore Fishing Club is part of a national program called Hooked on Fishing, Not on Drugs, an outreach initiative that is part of the Future Fisherman Foundation. The main focus of the club is to teach kids how to make responsible decisions while fishing, and in turn, to make responsible decisions throughout other areas of their life. His club helps students make the right choices and become responsible citizens. In September of 2012, Mr. Lefco approached the principal, Ms. Harrell, about beginning an after-school program at the school. She was thrilled, as she had wanted to and tried to start an after-school program since 2008. However, she did not receive the same interest from parents as Mr. Lefco did. He immediately started the Busy Bees After-School Program. Mr. Lefco dedicates some of his time to be a mentor to at-risk students at Bay Shore Elementary. He checks on these students every day to see how they are doing and to provide any help that they might need. He is a positive role model and provides stability to these young students. In addition, Mr. Lefco has been working with students to reestablish gardens on the school campus. The students have been planting seeds, weeding, and painting the garden shed. He gave the students several paint color choices and let the students work together to pick the final colors. Not only is he teaching the students important gardening skills, but they are also learning how to make group decisions on their own. A number of school staff had made wonderful things, had wonderful things to say about Mr. Lefco and expressed how fortunate the school was to have him there. He is described as being dedicated, enthusiastic, kind, helpful, passionate, well-organized, a team player, loyal, and very creative. He has the ability to establish positive relationships, not only with staff and students, but with parents and members of the community as well. Mr. Lefco has increased parent involvement at Bay Shore Elementary and has also added several business partners to the school by seeking help with programs and activities. The staff and students, and many others, truly believe that Mr. Lefco is deserving of being selected as the 2014 Lee County Education Support Person of the Year. The school board and the superintendent are very pleased to recognize and to congratulate Mr. Lefco as the school district's 2014 Education Support Person of the School Year. Now, I would like to give Mr. Lefco a certificate on behalf of the board. Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you so much.
And would you like to say something?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm going to try to keep it light this time, and like, unlike my last interview on this matter, I got a little emotional on the camera, but I just wanted to say, there's so many amazing people in the school district. I'm just really fortunate to be recognized. There's so many more out there. Bay Shore is an amazing place, and this is a really big honor for me and my family. So, thank you all so much for taking the time to recognize me today.
Something that he is not telling you is that he is also so interested in education that he is going to take a teacher test so that he can become a teacher in Lee County. So, yeah, this coming Saturday. Why, he's a tough act to follow. However, at this time, I would like to invite Mr. Jarrett Edie, President of the Dunbar Festival Committee, and Chair of the Lee County Black History Society Board of Directors; Ms. Siobhan Chester, overall chair of Martin Luther King Events; Mr. James Mewockill, President of the NAACP; Mr. Willie Green, President of Justice for All People Foundation; Dr. Shirley Chapman, Head of the NAACP Education Committee; members of that committee, Stephanie House, Fred Morgan, and James Buchanan; and we may have from the City of Fort Myers, Councilwoman Teresa Watkins Brown, Ward 1; Councilwoman Johnny Streets, Jr., Ward 2; Councilwoman Christine Matthews, Ward 3; and Larry Hart, Lee County Tax Collector. To all, please join me at the lectern. Every January, the Dunbar Festival Committee sponsors the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commemorative Celebration as a tribute to the life of this courageous civil rights leader. A goal of the celebration is to educate our community and our youth about the importance and significance of the civil rights movement, and the important role that Dr. King played in promoting equal rights for all individuals. This year's celebration marks Dr. King's 85th birthday and the 28th anniversary of the national holiday in his honor, which is celebrated in all 50 states and over 100 countries around the world. This year's theme, "We Always Have Today: To Work Toward a Better Tomorrow," reiterates the importance of remembering Dr. King's work and acting on his teachings and principles of nonviolence and human rights. The celebration will begin on Saturday, January 18th, and will culminate with the multicultural celebration in Centennial Park on Monday, January 20th. Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of the resolution proclaiming the school board's and the school district's support of the 2014 Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commemorative Celebration.
Board members, before the motion is voted, let's have a second. Lady President Armstrong, all in favor, can you by us say aye?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Mr. Edie, I'd like to present you with the resolution. I'm a joy to say your words.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, school board members. Dr. Graham, it's a pleasure to say Dr. Graham Superintendent. She was my favorite professor at Nova, next to Dr. Atkins, if he's in the room. On behalf of the Dunbar Festival Committee, we accept your resolution, and we thank you so much for the diligence and support you provide to our community and our organization. We're very excited this year to host this event on the heels of the 50th anniversary of the March in Washington speech, and we're glad to continue the legacy of Dr. King. Specifically, also, our special accolades to our student representative, what a huge step in the right direction to have a student on the board giving discussion. So, on behalf of the committee, thank you so much, and we look forward to your support.
Dr. Chapman, do you have something she wants to say?
Fred Morgan will represent.
Okay. Are you going to sing?
Good evening. My name is Frederick Dunbar Morgan II, and I'm a member of the wonderful Education Committee of the NAACP, working with Dr. Graham in improving the Lee County School District. Dr. Shirley Chapman is our chair. We have Stephanie House, and we have Mr. James Buchanan serving on that committee. We are so proud of the MLK celebration this upcoming weekend, and we feel that we're working collaboratively to improve the student outcomes in our community. We launched this initiative just a few months ago, and we've made significant improvements in the area of student improvement, working with Dr. Graham. We brought several issues to her, and she has really, with Dr. Atkins, begun working on improving, especially in the area of hiring, and then working with the pipeline from ALC to prison. We're cutting that pipeline off so that our young people can get the studies and to get the improved training that they need and the education so that they can get out and become productive citizens. Now for the song. There will be mountains that I will have to climb, and there will be battles that I will have to fight. But victory or defeat, it's up to me to decide. Tell me, how can I expect to win if I never try? I just can't give up now. I've come too far from where I started from. Nobody told me the road would be easy, and I don't believe he brought me this far to leave me. That is the message that our Education Committee inspires our young people and our community. Thank you so much.
I would like to invite the following individuals to join me at the lectern. Mrs. Patty Elkin, Director of Curriculum Services; Ms. Christine Bozenbark, Elementary Reading Coordinator; and Ms. Lori Huchin, Secondary Reading Coordinator. Celebrate Literacy Week Florida is an annual event recognized and supported by the Governor and Commissioner of Education. The goal of this week is to promote literacy throughout the state and to foster enjoyment of reading for children and adults of all ages. The Lee County School District has always been strongly committed to promoting literacy as the catalyst for the success of each of its students. Toward that end, the district has implemented a comprehensive, coordinated reading initiative aimed at helping every student become a successful, independent reader. Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of the resolution proclaiming the week of January 13th to 17th, 2014, as Celebrate Literacy Week of Florida.
Before we begin the motion, is there a second? Second, by Ms. Fisher. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Say a few words?
Please. Esteemed board members and Dr. Graham, thank you for accepting the resolution to proclaim January 13th through the 17th, Celebrate Literacy Week. Kofi Annan, who received the Nobel Peace Prize in 2001 for his human rights work, defined literacy as the following: For everyone, everywhere, literacy is, along with education in general, a basic human right. Literacy is the road to human progress and the means through which every man, woman, and child can realize his or her full potential. On behalf of every child who enters our district, thank you for your dedication and commitment to literacy.
Well, that's kind of a tough act to follow with all these people that was up here earlier. The character award for January is commitment. Find yourself a course of action despite obstacles. Make yourself a promise and keep it. The difference between the impossible and the possible lies in a man's determination. Tommy Laso.
Thank you. While we figure out who's in what seat up here, take a brief recess, so those who wish to leave might do so right now. Very brief recess, so if you'd like to leave and aren't interested in the rest of what we have to say.
School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted that to me before the meeting began, you'll be called in the order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the school board this evening, the school board chair, Mr. Scott, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning public comment to the school board are posted at the back of the room and include the requirement that any speaker wishes to address the school board to endorse the purchase of a product or a service in which that speaker has a personal interest, the speaker must reveal that interest before making comment to the board. The school board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the conclusion of public comment time, the school board chair may address concerns raised by speakers or may assign responsibility to the superintendent to do so. The time allowed for speakers, three minutes. Mr. Scott, I have four cards this evening.
Okay. Is there anyone on the right side of the auditorium who did not fill out a card who wishes to speak? Councilman Streets. Anybody on the left side? Okay, if you'd call the first card.
Our first speaker this evening is Ms. Rosemary Jackson.
Sorry, I'm very nervous. But the reason I'm here, because it's an incident that took place with my son at Cypress Lake High School. His name is Keith Drayton. He was attacked by four other students that attended Cypress Lake High School. So, due to that, they were saying that he's going to be expelled from school. So, the reason why I'm here, because I'm concerned of my 12th grader that's been pretty good for the last four years, and they're trying to expel him out of school. I'm looking for him to graduate and attend college, but they're saying that he's going to be expelled, so he's looking forward to graduating and also attending grad batch. So, that's why I'm here, my concerns.
Thank you for your comments.
Hearing or anything, so... Hearing or anything, so that's why I'm here.
We'll respond in just a few minutes directly to you. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr. Keith Drayton.
Y'all hear my mama said, I got in a fight. And then like really called about a hearing or anything, like saying what they want to do with me, so like they just letting us know that they're supposed to be expelling me or something like. I don't really know what to say, you know what I'm saying?
Okay, thank you very much.
Next speaker is Ms. Annette Diaz.
That was Diaz-Washington. And the reason I'm here is to, because my, they said that my son was involved in a fight in school. So my concern is that they said that they were going to expel him from the school, so my concern is that he, please, I beg of y'all, that I would like him to finish his education and for him to continue going to school. He been going to school for my, for the whole, his whole entire year. And I would appreciate very much that he could continue going to the Lee County School. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Streets?
We have one more card.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The last one is from Mr. Anthony Thomas.
Good evening, members of the board. To see the student representative serving, I'll thank Mrs. Fisher, Mrs. Dozier, Ms. Morgan, you guys were really good cheerleaders to make that happen. This is something Mrs. Dozier and I have been working on for many of years. And I'm just so pleased that, to see a student serving on the school board. I want to talk about two of these. The first one is the issue dealing with this young man that came before you. I actually organized for him and his parents to come here. I think this is something I've talked to, I placed a call to Mrs. Perkins. I've researched the issue, talked with the parents and tried to get as far as I can all of the information. I don't see this as something that's warranted expulsion. I also placed a call to Dr. Graham to talk about this. So I hope that offline you can work with the parents to help these students get back in school. As we're celebrating and passing a resolution honoring Dr. King and Mr. Morgan, said very eloquently earlier about breaking the cycle of people going from school to jail. We got two students here tonight that wants to graduate, and I think it's your responsibility to make sure they can go back to school and graduate. Now, one of the things I want to talk about is we just honored a resolution with Dr. King, something that got me really upset. And that is this issue with this good cause issue that the superintendent is bringing up tonight, dealing with the tutoring. I've had the opportunity to meet with several of the board members, and I've been working behind the scenes with Dr. Atkins regarding this tutoring program. I don't believe that this tutoring program should be renewed right now until you can get some glitches fixed. What we have in the proposal from the superintendent, I think, fails our students with all due respect. With the tutoring program, they're going to have testing, but it's only at testing ten percent. I think if we're going to be testing students who are already behind, let's keep in mind most of these students who are going to be doing this tutoring are minority students. And they're already behind, that's why they're getting after school tutoring. And now, you're not going to test them based on their ability to come up to grade level, you're testing them on a ten percent ratio. It's got a lot of other problems, whether it's dealing with how teachers are being used as a vehicle to recruit students to participate with this program. We've outlined all of our concerns to the superintendent and to several board members. I don't feel it's appropriate tonight to move forward with this. I know one of the persons who is a provider is also prepared to go to the feds and ask for investigation and file a complaint with the Florida Department of Education. We've tried to work within the system to address these issues. It's unfortunate we've got to this point where we have to come before the board tonight and ask them to hold off on this until the glitches are fixed. But I believe you all, the board members, have been told about all of the glitches and the problems, so is my time up?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Councilman Streets.
Thank you, the Honorable Chair and the Honorable Board and Madam Superintendent, it's good to be here. And on behalf of the city of Fort Myers, representing the schools within the city that we're willing to work with you to iron out any problems that we may have. So we're an advocate for you, so please use us. One of the items, very briefly, I want to talk about in regards to the tutoring. I'm very grateful that you have chosen some recipients to do this tutoring. We need tutoring, but also as Dr. Graham and Chairman Scott and I talked about sometimes about tutoring for the teachers also, particularly the new ones. I think it's a good program. I'll be meeting further down this week or next week with Dr. Spiro, I believe, to discuss some other issues, because we're really concerned about the educational process within the city of Fort Myers as Lee County as a whole. My quick comment would be is, in regards to this tutoring, I just have some just suggestions. Allow the enrollment forms to be mailed or delivered to the students to take home for, for, to be looked at and signed by the parents. Allow completed enrollment forms by the parents going to be returned to the school by the students. And I know sometimes, like someone said about the glitches, we can work through these, but the most part is educating our children. And if we don't have time to do it right, we don't have time to do it over. So I thank you all for allow at least three weeks enrollment in this, so that everybody will have an opportunity that need tutoring to participate. I do think that you're headed in the right direction, and I support what you're doing. I thank you for allowing those companies that you have chosen. I believe that they're reputable, and some of them I know, I don't have any personal interest in any of them, but I stand behind this board and who you've chosen to represent Lee County. Thank you very much.
Dr. Graham, do you have any, anything you could tell us about the Cypress Lake issue that was raised earlier? Is that coming to us in another format at some point in the future? So we can provide answer.
Possibly some. I can't address these two particular students because there was a large group and it's still in process. Mr. Dozier and I actually just talked about it today. So I, what I'm going to do is ask Mr. Spiro to contact the principal and be sure that these parents are communicated with a little more clearly about where we are in the process. And I saw him writing while they were talking, so I'm sure that'll happen first thing tomorrow.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Martin, I'm going to ask you, if you would, please to, for the benefit of the board, update us relative to sunshine law as it relates to the student members and how we should and should not be relating to them.
Mr. Scott, thank you. This being the first evening that you have a student representative, Mr. Rice, sitting with you at the board table, I did need to give you some brief advice concerning the application of the sunshine law. There is an Attorney General opinion that suggests that in this situation where the school board has designated a non-voting member to sit with you at the board table to take part in discussions that will lead to a vote to action by the school board, that the sunshine law then applies to your conversations with that person designated, the student representative. So my advice in that context is that you should not have discussions with the student representative outside of a school board meeting about any matters that you may be taking action on, that you may be voting on.
Thank you. Next is the approval of action items in the agenda under consent. I'll ask each board member if there are agenda items you wish to pull for discussion, beginning with Mr. Armstrong.
I have none tonight.
Thank you. Mrs. Morgan?
I have none.
Ms. Dozier?
I have none.
And Ms. Fisher?
No, no pulls this evening.
And I have none as well. Is there a motion to approve the agenda consent action items as written?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Fisher, second by Mr. Armstrong. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed alike, sign the motion passes five to nothing. We'll then move to the superintendent's recommendation under good cause. Dr. Graham, if you would please report that to us.
Approval to award RFP number R-137150JM for tutoring services to A Plus Tutoring and Educational Services, A to Z In-Home Tutoring LLC, Accuracy Temporary Services Doing Businesses ATS Project Success, Basic Learning Skills Inc., Markham Services Inc. Doing Businesses A Plus Markham, Matthews Management Group Doing Businesses Community Learning Center of Southwest Florida, and One-on-One Learning as indicated on the attached tabulation sheet. This contract will be in effect for the period of January fourteenth, two thousand fourteen, through January thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, at the estimated annual expenditure of one million, three hundred thousand dollars for the first year, with renewal options for two additional one-year periods upon the written agreement of vendor and the district approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all documents.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Dozier, second by Mrs. Morgan. Discussion, Mrs. Dozier?
Yes. Dr. Graham, there has been quite a bit of conversation around this issue. And while the subject was brought up again this evening, I have had conversations not only with one of the vendors and some concerns that they had, but some concerns also that Mr. Thomas brought up this evening. I don't know, I heard them saying that, that they have met, or that Dr. Atkins has met with that individual, is that correct? Could you kind of, is there anything that you can share with us as to how we are, where we are right now with these vendors and why that vendor was not in the selection process?
Actually, the vendor that has presented the majority of the issues is in the selection process, and...
They are in the selection?
Yeah, yeah. And I will tell you that most of the issues are based on past practice. The SES program has been in existence for, I think, six years, might be eight, six, is it six year? Okay, for six years. There have been issues along the way. We remember when we came to you with the RFP process, this was a new way of going about being, because we wanted it to be a fair and equitable process. In the past, there have been accusations that teachers of ours who worked for specific vendors were lobbying students, that the marketing wasn't equitable and that those in the schools had better access to the children. And the response has been, to anyone who has talked to these people that have raised these issues, is I am unable to, we are unable to fix the past, but we have put safeguards in place so that the things that are, have been expressed as concerns should no longer be able to happen. Number one, we have a policy that any employee that works for an outside vendor may not, under any circumstances, discuss that or promote that organization in the schoolhouse. And so, we have already sent an email to the principals of the schools that are going to have these services and shared that policy with them to remind them to share it with the teachers. The principals who will have these services are meeting on January twenty-third with Mrs. Coots and Dr. Clark to talk through the process for the open houses. Upon your approval tonight, there will be a letter sent to the vendors tomorrow, sharing with them when we will meet with them to talk about marketing. The fair will be open. We will work hard with our communications department to be sure that that information is clear for everyone involved. Students have always been able to take the materials home and bring them back, and we're not sure where that concern has come from, but they will continue to do that. In other words, they'll get all the information on all the vendors, take all of it home. It is the parent's choice which vendor that they choose to use for the tutoring. The other thing that has been raised is that we make sure those children who, who are eligible for the service really understand that they're eligible and help their parents understand it. So we will probably market this more than we ever have in the past, but again, most of the issues that you heard about tonight or were alluded to are past practices. And we have, we have committed to those who have, who have met with staff that we are going to do everything we know how to do to keep those things from happening again. Unfortunately, I can undo those things, but that's where we are.
If I can continue. I did hear Councilman Streets ask about the application. You said that the applications have always, the students have been able to take them home in the past, is that correct?
Yes.
And bring them back?
Yes.
So, well, you know, you said that this year we're going to have to do a better job of marketing. Maybe it would also be appropriate for there to be a flyer that goes home, because I know that every student has a packet every week. I see, I see a lot of people out there going like that. And a flyer that goes home in that student packet, because all elementary students have their little packet that the parents are geared to go through, and then it can tell them about that. And, you know, and I heard also that at the fair, that once the fair was there, it was already, you know, it was basically parents went straight to certain tables because they didn't go to other tables. Well, that's not the way we want things to happen. I mean, it should be fair across the board, and, you know, the purpose of the fair is so that they can go to every vendor and talk to everyone and then make a, you know, a very educated decision about who they want. So if you're telling me you've fixed everything, then I will be able to support this this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
And I have a question about how we are going to measure the effectiveness of these programs. And I did hear Mr. Thomas say that right now we're looking for ten percent gains, but as opposed to getting students on grade levels. So I would like an explanation of that, but I'd also like to know what instrument we are using to evaluate the performance of those who have received the contracts going forward.
I meant to mention that as one of the differences. In the past, the data we have on, on the vendor's performance has been based on their own assessments. So we are, do we have the name of the assessment we're going to use? Cheryl? Yeah, we, we are doing the pre and post-test this year with an assessment called STAR. I can get you details on that assessment if you like, but the district is handling that for all students regardless of who they use as a tutor. That's very different than what's gone on in the past. And the reason for that is so that it is a level playing field. Everybody's been given the same pre-test, everybody has at it with their tutoring, and then at the end, everybody's given a post-test, and the results, I, in my opinion, will be much more valid as far as making reference to success of a vendor or not. So that's, that's a big change from what we've done in the past. Thank you.
Other comments?
I got one question. Dr. Graham, in light of getting into too much detail, what kind of safety precautions do we have now? Have we looked into any safety precautions to make sure these students are safe at all times?
One of the, one of the agenda topics for the meeting, the luncheon that, the meeting that they're going to have with the principals on the twenty-third is how we are going to monitor. There's one, one big difference, and I'll just briefly say, the vendors paid, they basically rented our facilities if they wanted to use them last year. We have taken that out of the formula, and so they're going to use our schools, and because they're going to be in our buildings under our terms, we will make sure that there are measures in place. Obviously, the safety of our children is our number one priority, and that is part of the conversation that will take place with principals prior to this program ever beginning. And the principals are, have a heightened awareness, obviously.
Just one of the suggestions I'd like to see, and I've said this before, is to always make sure that there's a tutor and an aide of some sort, somebody else, always present. You know, and it's just a thought, and it's an idea that I'd like to throw out there, and hopefully we can discuss it a little bit more. I just want to make sure that our students are safe at all times, and we do everything in all power to make sure that happens.
I can assure you that's what we'll do. I'm unsure that we can, we can respond exactly like that, but we, we will have that conversation with the principals.
If, all I can ask is that, please keep me abreast of what's...
Absolutely.
So I'm, I'm very concerned about all this, so I'd like to be informed of what's going on when we have time. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
I think we probably all share that concern about student safety.
Sure.
Without question. I also, and we had a conversation earlier this week, I'm concerned that every eligible student, in fact, has the opportunity. And we talked about who carries home the notices and who carries them back, and so on and so forth, and I've asked for some follow-up. If we have 100 students who are eligible who take the paperwork home and 50 bring it back, we missed 50% of an audience that needs help, and we have to have a way to go back and find out whether or not that was a choice made by a parent, or whether something got lost between here and there, or there and here. Taxpayers, all of us are reaching into our pockets and pulling out $1.3 million for this program. That's a lot of money, and it's aimed right at the people who need it the most, and I don't want to miss any of them unless they've consciously made a choice to step aside and not take advantage of it, so...
Well, and I know part of the discussion we had, and Dr. Clark and Mrs. Coots were there when we had it, is that we will make a concerted effort for those children who fail to respond, to have a conversation with those parents. This goes back to something we've talked about at this table a few times. Sometimes it's not that the parents don't want the child to be tutored, they really don't understand what they need to do to make that happen. And so, we understand that we're going to have to take a little more active approach to helping the parents understand. So, part of what the conversation with the principals will be is just what you said. If you have 50 children eligible and only 20 return their forms, we've got to get ahold of those parents, and A, is that really that they don't want them tutored, because some don't? Or is it that they didn't understand how to fill the form, or did the child lose the -- all kinds of things, and see if we can get the percentage of students that are participating up to where we think it ought to be, because we'd like all of them to take advantage of it that are eligible.
Absolutely. Other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, on the same side, motion passes five to zero. Board attorney comments?
None, sir, thank you.
Boy, I'm going to invite Mr. Rice back more often. We flew through this, didn't we? Board member comments, Ms. Fisher.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. After the hiatus, I had quite a rest tonight. I hope everyone else did, too. I'm looking forward to more of the things I saw before the holiday break continuing in 2014. I want to thank all of the dedicated staff who make a difference for kids every day, just like our Support Person of the Year. I mean, he's a great example. And if more people are exhibiting those kinds of behaviors, then 2014 will be a great year. I just wanted to report briefly on my committee's curriculum advisory committee. Chairman Patty Lochner, with support from Kristy Coots and Patty Elkin, continued to provide updated information and to lead discussions with members and guests regarding the popular Common Core pros and cons. School Health Advisory Committee continues to advocate for a comprehensive health education policy and to have a curriculum which offers developmental teaching, meets the standards, has a positive impact on wellness for our students, and also meets the statutory requirement. They do note that we have a budget in health of $800 for our population of over 87,000 students. There is a support for an updated tobacco policy to now include e-cigarettes and candy-flavored cigarettes. Available to teachers, and Ms. Coots, you probably know about this, is a free online class worth 60 in-service points on smoking cessation and how to teach a class available through the Lee County Health Department and the American Lung Association. The Lee County Coalition for Drug-Free Southwest Florida continues to be active and to be a part of the community wellness program. And I know that we're all focused on wellness this year, and we certainly want it to be not only our staff members, but parents, and of course, our students. The Coalition for Drug-Free Southwest Florida was founded in 1989 and due to the concern about substance abuse among our youth. It's one of the most active forces in the area of prevention. Their activities have included things like Drug House Odyssey, Red Ribbon Week, National Recovery Month, Safe Prescription Project. They present addictions conferences, and they've done a big community needs assessment. This year, Drug House Odyssey will be held on March 11th, 12th, and 13th. Our fifth graders, and we have a waiting list already, who can be fit into the schedule, get to come to that. And they do need volunteers, and you can go to drugfreysouthwestflorida.org to get information and help out if you're interested. They will be sponsoring a run for prevention in October of 2014 sponsored by the Busey Bank. Learning for Life continues in its 19th year of character education, and they will be holding a Learning for Life Character Themed Talent Show in January. I'll have the details for that shortly. Again, thank you, and that's all I have this evening. Mr. Scott, thank you.
Mrs. Dozier?
I have a couple of things. Brandon, again, thank you and welcome to the board table. It's really nice seeing a student here after all these years. I've been sitting here for a very long time, and I have tried to get a student representative. I've been working with Mr. Thomas and some other people for a long time, and I want to thank my fellow board members and the superintendent for making this come to pass because it's really nice, we're all about students, that's what we're about, and that is what our product is. So, I want to congratulate you for being selected by your peers to serve here this evening and for the next board meeting, and we look forward to a lot of real happy times here at the table with you, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Also, Dr. Graham, I want to thank you for your immediate attention to that emergency situation that took place, and to make sure that you contacted the right people and to put every, all the safeguards, make sure that all the safeguards were in place so that every student would be taken care of in the future. So, thank you for doing that, and thank you for keeping us informed about the situation and what was progressing. Also, I want to say that my prayers have been going out to the family at South Fort Myers High School that lost their son in a motorcycle accident, and I will continue to pray for this family. Also, as you look around the audience tonight, there is a person who is not here tonight. There is a person who was dedicated, hardworking. Oftentimes, you'd see her car parked outside when everybody else's car might have gone home, and she's not here tonight, and that's Georgiana McDaniel. I want to thank her for her years of dedication to the Lee County School Board, and I want to thank her for her friendship. She has really been a tremendous, she's been a tremendous friend, and I look forward to our friendship continuing. But it's really sad to lose somebody that has so much historical perspective and value to the organization. I know that you will fill the position with a good person, as good as she is, and I'm sure that she will be there to help that person if they need it. And I just want to say that if she's out there, in fact, she said, "I may not even watch board meetings anymore," when she and I had lunch together, but if she's out there watching, I just want her to know how much I personally appreciate all of her dedication and everything that she has done through the years, and, you know, that she exemplifies the type of employee that we have in Lee County, and I certainly hated that we had to lose her. And I want to welcome all the teachers and students back to Lee County, and I want to wish everyone a wonderful and prosperous new year, and I want all the students to do their absolute best and make excellent grades during the second semester. So, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Morgan?
I have a bunch of things, sorry. Congratulations to Mariner Middle, the staff and students for being named an International Baccalaureate World School. I want the board to know that I have arranged to meet with County Commissioners Hammond and Pendergrast with Dr. Desamore to talk about some of the financial issues that face us in this district. I met over the break with Ms. Muffey, Dr. Sparrow, and Dr. Bohatch about the student athletic transfer policy in place, and I am pursuing it based on their interest in exploring the possibility of creating a policy that would place limitations on athletic transfers. I've spoken with Ray Rodriguez, who supports the Florida State Athletic Association interpretation of the rule, not the interpretation that we got from the representative. And I've got an inquiry into the Senate Education Committee Policy Chair, and I'm also talking to Hillsborough and Pasco Counties, the people who are handling the athletic transfer policies there. So, I just wanted the board to be aware of that, and I would be interested in whether or not you're following that and have an opinion. With respect to the Support Person of the Year, I just want to say something about support people. In Maslow's hierarchy of need, you start with security, safety, and something to eat. And basically, that's what support staff does in this district. They get these kids, they meet that first level of need, so these kids in the classroom are ready to work. And I just think sometimes we don't recognize the role they play in having our students be ready, so I just wanted to make that comment. I sent you an email, and I made a mistake because I said I had mentioned my desire to sort of create an agenda for the rest of the school year about board workshops and briefings, because I didn't mention it in the workshop. I had notes that said that I was going to do that, but Susan has told me that I did not discuss it. So, anyway, you've got my email. I have, I am really interested in laying out a calendar for this board and for the staff in this district so that we know in the next six months that things that are of concern to us are scheduled. And so, I'm interested in your reaction to what I put out there. And for the audience, I said, "I personally would like to see us briefed on Head Start in Early Childhood Education, Alternative Education, Career and Technical Education, the Virtual School, the Market Watch Report Update, which really talks about foundational workplace skills that we need to incorporate K-12 in our schools, Common Core update, board expansion, and District Performance Data and Goals." And I've given you the detail on that. So, I'm just interested in whether or not, I know the superintendent would like to know that this is not my agenda, but that the issues I brought forward are issues that other board members share, or they have issues they would like to bring forward also. So, that's why I'm introducing this topic tonight. Oh, and this is sort of a housekeeping thing, but it's kind of bugged me. We get invitations to attend school events or community events where I believe board members should be represented. Sometimes, none of us go. Sometimes, some of us go. And so, I'm looking at two invitations. One is for the JROTC Ball, the other is for the Fort Myers High School Day done by the Rotary Club of Fort Myers. And I would just, I did the JROTC Ball last year with Mr. Scott, and I just wanted to know if anybody from the board was planning to do it, to attend this year. Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Okay. And then, I didn't know if anybody was planning to do the Fort Myers High School Day with the Rotary Club.
Yes, I'm going to that.
Very good. So, thank you. And then, I would like the board to know that I spoke to Dr. Graham about my concern regarding her add to staff in her office. We've had several conversations about it. I've been pretty candid about the fact that I think that we need to look at the support operations for board and superintendent before we make additions to staff, particularly at a time when we are making very difficult demands on district staff and on schools to rethink how they operate and rethink how they staff to support the needs of the staff and the children in this district. So, I just wanted to express that concern publicly, and those are my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Armstrong?
I'll keep this kind of briefing short. I want to welcome everybody back. First semester was an excellent, excellent year. Dr. Graham, so far, I can actually brag on one little thing. This year is the first year that my son has actually brought home first semester As and Bs, and I'm actually proud of that one. You actually, you know, Ms. Dozier's smiling because she knows, you know, it made me feel pretty good. So, I know that these kids are really achieving a lot, and a lot of my thanks goes out to the teachers, the hard-working staff out there, all Spur personnel that continue to get these kids back and forth, you know, and keep them safe. And as far as, you know, adding staff to the office or not adding it, you know, I somewhat agree with you. I really don't feel I want to add any staff anyway, but again, on that token, I can't say, "Dr. Graham, don't do it," or "do do it. Do your personnel." You'll have to add it or not add it. That's not my job, nor will I ever make it my job. I'll just respect your decision, and like I've told you in the past, you add somebody or don't add them. If it doesn't work out, you'll have to answer the five board members. That's just, suppose that. I'll respect your opinion, how you want to do it. It's your district, your personnel. Anthony Thomas, I've, you made, you brought some good issues. As far as some of our things that we need to look at, and I think you're right, we do need to address some of these other issues. I see that Dr. Graham's already addressed a few of these, and I'm glad to see that she's already working on the tutoring and some of these issues that you brought up, and hopefully we can get them resolved in a very timely manner. The other thing, I do want to reach out to everybody. This afternoon's workshop, there's a lot of issues financially going on in this district, and a lot of it's coming down from the state. They're putting a lot of burden on this district, but on the students, because it's going to hurt the students in the long run. And you get a chance, bend your local delegate's ear. Watch the workshop. We need everybody's help on this, so please take the time, walk, watch that workshop this afternoon, and we need to be one loud voice and let them know that we can't stand for this no more. They continue to put a lot of extra burdens on these students, on the teachers, and on the principals. And it's about time that we all stand up together and tell them enough is enough. Money don't grow on trees. We don't have a big field in the back that we go pick the hundred-dollar bills off of. At least, I don't think so unless Amy wants to let me in on something. But we need to stick together, and we need to make our voice be heard. And if people have ideas, contact your board member, superintendent. We have got to stick together and make sure that this doesn't go through, because it's going to hurt us in the long run. It's going to hurt our students most of all. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
I'm going to throw it to you, Mr. Rice, for some final comments.
I just want to thank everybody again for allowing me to have this chance. It's been really exciting sitting up here and listening to the board meeting, and I look forward to the next one. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
Well, it's two weeks late, but Happy New Year, everybody. Glad to have you all back. I just want to say that we have some real responsibilities up here, and I hope everyone who is here tonight, everybody who may be watching... And I hope everyone who is here tonight, everybody who may be watching, and the overwhelming majority of the population who's not watching or listening, understands that we understand how serious these issues are. We're not being flippant about the way we approach them. We're taking our time, but we're not taking too much time because we don't have too much time. They're serious. They need to be taken care of, and they need to be taken care of properly and for the long term. It is for the benefit of our children in this community that we're doing everything that we're doing up here. So, as you listen to us debate these various things, understand that we're coming at it with our... I know our hearts are in the right place, and I know our minds are lined up as well. There are not easy answers. There won't be easy answers. We didn't come here for an easy job. We came here to do things right for you, for the people who sent us here, for everybody in this community, and we're going to do the best job we can. So, with that, I know that we're all dedicated to the work that needs to be done as we go forward. I think this afternoon's session was a very open, honest, and forthright discussion of where we are and where we need to head. And every time we have those discussions, I believe we get a little closer and closer and closer to the correct answers over the long haul. So, your input is valuable. Don't sit there and think you have no access because you do have access. Trust me, there are some people who probably know our email addresses in their sleep, our phone numbers in their sleep, and that's fine. I wish there were more. I'd like to hear from more people, get a broader viewpoint of this community and what you think about what is, as Dr. Graham said earlier this afternoon, your school system. It's yours. We're just helping to manage it along at this point in time. Mr. Martin, do you have comments tonight?
No, sir, thank you.
Dr. Graham?
Just a few. I'm glad Georgiana McDaniel's name came up. I wanted to acknowledge her retirement from the system. But being who she is, she wanted nothing said, done. She didn't want a celebration that was public, though I know she had many, many private ones among those she works with. But she did serve this district for a very long time in a very sincere, hard-working way, and so, we are grateful for that. And one of the things Georgiana always did was make sure I had a list of who was appointed administratively. And so, these people, because I didn't get that this time from Georgiana to remind me to do it, they've been patiently waiting, but you did welcome some new administrators tonight. And I'm going to do the ones I know are here, and then if there are others, if Shannon or Christine can give me a clue, I'd appreciate it. But serving as the interim director of personnel while we do a national search, we want to advertise nationally for that position. We have Shannon Smith, who has been the assistant director for a very long time. Shannon, if you want to stand. Interim Assistant Director Christine Christiansen, right next to her. His mom and I taught together a long time ago at Fort Myers High. And then, you approved tonight for Mr. Ron Skylar to serve as the principal of Fort Myers Middle School, and we are very excited about that. And he's right there in the back. And is that your staff with you? Is that who's with you? Wonderful. Thank you for coming. Am I missing any other administrators that we appointed tonight? Georgiana would be so proud. Okay, the other thing, I do look forward to direction. Mrs. Morgan and I did have a conversation. I know she sent you all an email. And I think it was helpful that we want to continue, if it serves the board well, to have workshops at the first of the month, and then the second meeting have the briefings. If we don't have... If they aren't all workshops and you just want to be briefed on things, then we'd have two briefings in the month. But I think it has been helpful to have an order to that. So, if you want to, however you want to work that out, either just send me your feedback on which ones you want to do, and then when I have some sense, or if you can say right now you liked all the issues that were presented to you via email. I don't know if you had a chance to look at that, but I look forward to that direction because we're ready to make that schedule. And it's on the agenda tomorrow for cabinet, actually, all those topics to figure. And interestingly, many of them, we have this big idea list, and that many of those are already on there. So, we just need direction. I need direction from you as a board. I want to share that there are a lot of choice open houses going on right now, and that's a big part of the student assignment process that... And for people who are watching, if they will tell people who aren't watching, go visit the schools. That's just another way to be a little more informed about the choices that you make. I also want to tell you, I mentioned this this afternoon, there are open houses... No, there aren't open houses. There are town hall meetings coming up in February. We're going to have six of them at three high schools, one in each zone. And so, on February 6th and 7th, we will be in the east zone. And the plan is that we will meet at 6:00 in the evening at Lee High Senior High School on February 6th, and then we will do the exact same thing at 7:30 the next morning on February 7th. That's in the east zone. In the west zone, it will be February 13th at 6:00 p.m. and February 14th at 7:30 a.m. at Ida Baker High School. And then, South Fort Myers High School, February 20th at 6:00 p.m. and February 21st at 7:30. This will be in our... On our website, the information will be out everywhere we can think to put it. And the whole purpose of this evening or morning meeting is to explain the history and the purpose and the process involved in our student assignment system so people understand why we do what we do as far as assigning students to schools. And then, give... And we want business community to come as well to get that education. And then, after about 30 to 45 minutes of information, we will have student assignment folks with us so that parents right on the spot can enroll their child if they want to get that process finished without having to come to a student assignment office. So, Lee High Senior High, Ida Baker High, South Fort Myers High School, and that's the first three weeks in February, we'll be doing that. And we're excited to be able to provide this opportunity. In the meantime, if people go to those open houses, they could come to that meeting with some sense of where they might want to, what list they want to put together. I would like to thank, you know, I got thanks for our situation last week going so smoothly. And I just want to say, I don't know, is Amity Chandler in here? Yeah. Amity, who runs our communications department. Principals have figured out that there are people here to help them when it's time to communicate something challenging, and something good, too, but particularly when something's challenging. And within a very brief period last week, very short amount of time in the morning, while I was texting you, Amity was working with the principal of the school. And by noon, all parents had been informed. And so, when the media was there in the afternoon to ask lots of questions and get surprised responses, what they got was, "We already know the principal contacted us." And that... To see that process work was a really powerful thing. And I want to commend the staff of that school and Amity and the people she works with and thank them for making that work. Also, want to thank our teachers. New semester, new challenges, same kids. So, there you go. And our support personnel. Mrs. Morgan, I love that analogy, that they do provide the very basic needs, and we would be unable to do it without them. If you are on Twitter, please follow us at Lee County Schools or Lee School Super or both. Good way to get quick, current information. And I want to thank the Retired Military Officers Association. I spoke there last night. And that is a group of retired military folks who want to support our school system very, very, very actively. And there are some things they do already, but it was encouraging to be with them and to hear just how much they believe in what we're doing. They want to help tell our story better, and we're going to encourage them and help them do that with us. As always, I am grateful for the opportunity to lead.
Thank you. Next scheduled meetings of the board are January 28th, 2:00. A special meeting followed immediately by the school board briefing meeting and the action meeting then at 6:00 p.m. Unless there's an objection, this meeting will be adjourned.